Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, July 17, 2025, special study session of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with all council members present tonight. We have just one item on our agenda, and it is a briefing on the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative, followed by an executive session later this evening. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Stacy Ray, our Assistant City Manager, presenting this evening. Hi Stacy.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. Stacy Ray, Assistant City Manager. So I'll be speaking to the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative tonight. The actual petition title as submitted to the city is "Fair Wages, Fair Schedules: A Workers' Bill of Rights." So my role here tonight is really just to share information with you about the initiative process. So we'll talk about process tonight and the language in the initiative as submitted by the sponsors. As much as you or anyone watching might want to know more about what's in the initiative, I'll not be able to answer tonight any legal questions or really questions about implementation from the city's perspective. It's still very early, and there's a lot that we are still learning about this. We will be taking notes tonight on the conversation, the questions, the topics, the issues that come up, because that can inform our future work on this, on this project. I'll also add that the purpose of tonight is not for staff to seek guidance from you as council. In a moment, I'll discuss the requirements for council action and the resulting options that will be in front of you on July 22. Those options will not include a staff analysis and will not have a staff recommendation associated with them. The purpose of tonight's study session is to describe the process, as I mentioned, and share the content of the initiative as written. Study sessions do not include public comment, but members of the public who wish to comment at a council meeting may do so on July 22 during the public comment part of the agenda. So just to review the submittal timeline for the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative, on June 24, our city clerk received the first batch of petition signatures. On June 25, we filed or sent the first batch of signatures and filed that with the Office of the Thurston County Auditor for their review. On June 30, we sent a second batch of signatures to the Office of the Thurston County Auditor. And on July 14, the auditor certified the petition as sufficient pursuant to RCW 35A.11.100. So for a petition to be certified as sufficient, it needed to be signed by 15% of the total number of names of persons listed as registered voters within the city on the day of the last preceding city general election. And so for the Thurston County Auditor's Office, they determined the number of minimum verified signatures would need to be 5,788. So I'll share some data around the petition's middle. So the Thurston County Elections Office let us know that the number of registered voters in the city of Olympia at the 2024 general election was 38,591. The number of signatures on the petition that was filed by the proponents were 13,764. The number of signatures examined were 12,118. And the number, as I mentioned before, the minimum needed was 5,788. So the county verified an additional eight signatures above what was needed to move the petition forward. And they rejected 6,322 signatures.
Did they stop verification once they reached that 96, or was that?
Yes, they did. So, um, w- once the county reported on the petition having been certified as sufficient, we now begin our process timeline as the city of Olympia. So we're here tonight, July 17, for a city council study session to understand the process and what's in the initiative. On July 22, you're slated to take action on a resolution. There's a requirement that your action be taken within 20 days of the issuance of sufficiency. So there are two options in front of you as a city council. One is pass the proposed initiative petition ordinance without alteration, and the other is to send the proposed initiative petition ordinance without alteration to a vote of the people. So next, I'll speak to the timeline. If you, as a council, approve a resolution to send the initiative to a vote of the people. So if on the 22nd, you choose that path, this would, this is what the timeline would look like. So August 4, city council action, city council takes action on for against statement committee members.
Stacy? Sorry to interrupt. It seems like we're having some technical difficulty, so we are going to pause for a moment. So at this time, we are going to take a 10-minute recess. Okay, so we are back. I think we have our technical issues resolved. And so I'm going to ask the Assistant City Manager, Stacy Ray, to take the presentation from the top. Stacy?
All right, thank you, Mayor. So once again, Stacy Ray, Assistant City Manager, here to share information on the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative. It was titled by the petition sponsors as "Fair Wages, Fair Schedules: A Workers' Bill of Rights." So my role here tonight is to share information with you about the initiative process and the language in the initiative as submitted by the sponsors. The, while we may want to have a conversation of more about what the language means or what's included, really, I'm limited in what I can answer tonight. I won't be answering any legal questions or speaking to really implementation from the city's perspective. It's still very, very early in the process, but tonight is a good opportunity for us to take notes so that we're capturing the questions and issues and topics that are coming up for you. I'll also add that the purpose of tonight is not for staff to seek guidance from you as council. In a moment, I'll talk about the requirements for council action and the resulting options that will be in front of you on July 22. Those options will not include a staff analysis and will not include a staff recommendation. The purpose of tonight's study session, again, is to really describe the process and to share the content of the initiative as written. Study sessions don't include public comment, but members of the public who wish to comment at a council meeting can do so on July 22 during the public comment section of the meeting. So we'll walk through the petition's middle and review timeline. So we received the first batch of petition signatures from the sponsors on June 24. Those were received by the city and then scanned digitally and sent over to the Thurston County Auditor's Elections Office. On June 25, the very next day is when the, the initial batch was filed with the office, again, of Thurston County Auditor. June 30, we filed a second batch of signatures with the Thurston County Auditor. And on July 14, the auditor certified the petition as sufficient pursuant to RCW 35A.11.100. So to be certified as sufficient, the petition need to have been signed by at least 15% of the total number of names of persons listed as registered voters within the city on the day of the last preceding general election. And the auditor's office determined that the minimum number needed was 5,788. So I'll talk a little bit about the data in terms of the petition. So at the time of the 2024 general election, the number of registered voters were 38,591. The petitioners submitted 13,764 signatures. The county, the Elections Office examined 12,118 signatures. And the minimum number needed, again, was 5,788. The number verified by the county was 5,796. So the county did stop their verification process once they exceeded the minimum number needed. Around 6,000, or excuse, not around, 6,322 signatures of those inspected were rejected for various reasons noted, noted on the slide below.
Councilmember Cooper.
Stacy, how many were left?
Oh, um, oh. About 1,600, yeah.
Okay, because I wanted to, I wanted, I'm going to double check, because I think it's 1,648. So how much did it cost us to do this part?
So I'm not sure of the cost of, of that part in particular, but I did receive information from the county at what the cost would be to continue. If you wanted to continue to do the rest, verify the rest of the signatures, and that would be around, they gave us a ballpark estimate of around $1,500. But they said that they would need to work it in, in between other work they're doing right now to start receiving ballots.
That makes sense, yeah. And I, I, I learned yesterday afternoon that we don't pay for this until we pay for the November election. So that bill all comes together later in the year. So that makes sense that they wouldn't have the, the high-level number, but I appreciate you finding out the number to continue. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right, so in terms of the timeline for the city of Olympia, so we're here tonight on July 17 for a city council study session, and you're slated to take action on July 22 at a regular business meeting. So when I say take action, I mean the city council action on a resolution. That action must occur within 20 days after the certificate of sufficiency is received by the city. The options for council action are to pass the proposed initiative petition ordinance without alteration or to send the proposed initiative ordinance without alteration to a vote of the people.
Stacy? I just want to make a clarifying point on our, the options for council. So council must act on these two options. It's, it's not a choice to not act. I just wanted to be clear about that, that we have to choose one of these options.
Yeah, per RCW 35.17.260 provides the council may either pass the proposed ordinance without alteration within 20 days of the certificate of sufficiency or call it election.
Just wanted to reemphasize that, thank you.
Thank you. If you, as a council, determine that you approve the resolution for sending the initiative to a vote of the people, this is what the timeline would look like. So August 4, you, as a council, would take action on determining the committee members to develop the for and against statements. That would be in the voter's pamphlet. August 5 is a deadline for submittal of the resolution and explanatory statement of the initiative and the for and against committee members. So that is a deadline set by the auditor's office, which is why you would need to take action on the committee members on August 4 at a regular business meeting. August 12 is the deadline the county's given us for submitting the for or against statement content that would go in the voter's pamphlet and, of course, the general election. So before we start to get into the content of the initiative, there's just a few things I want to say upfront. So this presentation reflects the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative language as was certified by the auditor on July 14, 2025. And again, the petitioners called this "fair wages, fair schedules: A Workers' Bill of Rights." So the entirety of the initiative language is not included in this presentation. It was attached to your staff report, though. The content has not been summarized. I have not changed the language here to make it more succinct or summarize it. It is as written in the initiative. But I did present it in a different order that I thought might help with understanding. So really, I think what could be called the introductory or the purpose language of the initiative outlines the following intent: that the workers deserve fair and secure scheduling with sufficient advance notice of their work schedules. Much of this content is up in front of you, so I'm not going to read all of it. But I will read some of it for some of our viewers that may be listening and just want to hear some of it out loud, if that's okay. So workers deserve a fair opportunity to move into full-time work when those hours become available. Workers deserve a fair wage for their work. Workers deserve a safe workplace environment, and workers deserve to know their rights and have tools to enforce them. So this is where I moved content from one location within the document upfront. So we'll take a look at the definitions. And again, these are not all the definitions, but some of them. So within the initiative, "a large employer" means an employer that employs more than 500 employees, regardless of where those employees are employed, including franchises. "A medium employer" means an employer that employs more than 15 employees, but not more than 500, regardless of where those employees are employed, including all franchisees.
Is the, where their? Councilmember Cooper, one moment. Councilmember Vanderpoel, and then Councilmember Cooper.
If he wants to finish his thought.
Okay, he's yielding.
Thank you. Sorry, I just thought I saw you nodding me. The, you said any, employed anywhere. Is that globally at the United States, or is that not specified other than anywhere?
It's not specified beyond what you see here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vanderpoel.
You can, you can give me an approximation on this, but do you know how many, how many businesses fall under the medium or large tier in the city approximately? Have an idea?
I can't answer that tonight, but we can look into it.
Okay. Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Green.
Mostly asking to flag it, because I don't expect you to have all the answers to this, but it, when we're talking about an employer, is that like the business itself? Or is it if a person owns multiple separate businesses that are not a franchise? I'm thinking that, you know, some, you know, if somebody owns two restaurants, but they're different businesses.
So there's a further definition that may apply to the question that you're noting.
Okay.
Councilmember Green.
Someone else may know this. I'm just not as familiar with the language around franchise organizations. So a franchisee associated with a franchiser or network. So if I own four Dutch Brothers, that's a franchise. Are those four considered a thing, or is it all of the Dutch Brothers considered a thing?
I see.
Okay.
I won't be able to answer that tonight.
Okay.
But we'll take note.
Thank you.
So a small employer means an employer that employs 15 or fewer employees.
Stacy, we have a question from Mayor Protemwin.
Stacy, I have another question about the business sizes. I know, and I say this knowing that it was a part of our, or it still is a part of our council work plan to, to study this. Being that this initiative has come up, it's, you know, sort of sped up the timeline. So will we have information on how many small, medium, and large employers we have before making a decision on this?
Yeah, so looking at our workforce demographics and makeup is included within the scope of work currently that we have a request for qualifications out for. So, and, and this conversation tonight and what we, what you're interested in with the topics that come up can also influence the scope of that as we refine it.
Okay, and then, though, we wouldn't know these numbers prior to when we need to make a decision on this, is that right?
It, it's highly unlikely we would know by July 22.
Okay, thank you. I thought as much, but.
Yeah, let me clarify. We certainly wouldn't know through the RFQ, not through the RFQ process, that we, only if staff has availability to some of this data. But again, like I'm saying, that's highly unlikely on such a short turnaround.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor Protem.
Do you happen to know why the medium employer is such a large range?
I don't know what the, what the thinking or intent behind that is.
Okay, okay, that just is, uh, yeah, it's a big question mark for me. Thank you.
So, again, this is not an all-inclusive list of definitions, but I did include here annual rate of inflation, noting that it's defined here as 100% of the annual average growth rate of the bi-monthly Seattle-Tacoma-Bellevue area consumer price index for urban wage earners. And hours worked within the city is to be interpreted according to its ordinary meaning, including all hours worked within the geographic boundaries of the city.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you. I'm going to guess this is another one you don't have any, are you ready for all these questions? My question is around that, within the geographic boundaries. So do you, do you know? Would that apply if you were employed at a Tacoma business doing deliveries within the city of Olympia? Like, is it any employee doing work within the city limits regardless of where the employer is based? Or is it on?
So I'm unable to answer that question beyond what, how it's defined in the.
Councilmember Cooper.
I can answer it because it's in our BNO slide deck, and it tells us how many workers are working inside the city and outside of the city. And the normal BNO billing bills you for every hour worked inside the city or every dollar earned inside, inside the city.
Councilmember Vanderpoel.
The geographic boundaries, does that include the UGA, or is that, or does that not include the UGA?
I'm unable.
There's the language.
Yeah, I, I really am unable to interpret it further. But we'll note that question. So the next section is focused on, as the petition language put it, giving workers the right to fair scheduling so they can plan their lives and family budgets. So at time of hire or during employment, employee may identify any limitations or changes in work schedule availability. They have the right to request not to be scheduled for shifts during certain times or certain locations and the right to identify preferences.
Councilmember Gilman.
Just to ask a clarification, because this was a place that I highlighted trying to make sure I was understanding, that those first two things about getting sufficient advance notice and having the ability to request schedule or whatever, those apply to all three sizes of businesses, but the rest of the predictive scheduling stuff, I believe, only applies to the large 500 and over. Is that, is that your understanding also?
So some, some sections you'll see will specify at the beginning if they're, if it's intended to apply to one subsection of employer size, yes.
So this was a question that came up in a, in a meeting with community members about whether a small bar might have these requirements in it. It, what I understand from the, it's at the bottom of the first page, about this, this section, it says that all employers are encouraged to accommodate employee requests to the greatest extent possible. That's, that's all the more that I see as offered for the small and medium employers. And then the rest of the, the predictive scheduling sort of language, it says it applies only to large employers except that contractors, as defined under RCW Chapter 1827, are exempt. So just, I just wanted to, that, that's one of the things that was hanging me up.
Stacy, another point on, that goes along with employers and the, and the boundaries is I'm hearing inquiries about whether or not this initiative applies to state government, tribal government. My understanding is that it does, but I know that there are some questions about that, and there seems to be a lack of clarity for a few folks that I've spoken with. So it'd be important to, to make that clarifying point come Tuesday.
Yeah, we'll take that note, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So as Councilmember Gilman noted, the next three relate to large employers. So large employers shall provide their employees with a written work schedule, at least 14 calendar days before the first day of the work scheduling period. Large employers shall notify the employee of any employer requested change to the work schedule as soon as possible. And an employee of a large employer may decline a work shift. And an employee of a large employer may decline a work shift for which they receive less than 14 days' advance notice. If the employee consents to work such a shift, the employee shall be entitled to an unfair scheduling payment equal to one hour of pay at the employee's regular rate of pay for each shift worked with less than 14 days' notice. For our viewers, I'll provide the example that was included in the initiative as it was included. And if an employee makes $22 an hour, they're entitled to a payment equal to $22.
Councilmember Madron.
Again, not expecting you to have all these answers. So if, you know, there's, uh, one employee, you know, calls in sick, and another employee is asked to come in, would that be considered something that they are entitled to a payment for if they consent to working that shift?
I, if we're basing it on this language, it, if it's less than 14 days' advance notice, an employee is entitled to an unfair scheduling payment.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Cooper.
Since the large employer applies to us, would you see if you can verify before Tuesday if you agree with your assumption that you just made? Because that, that large employer would apply to the city of Olympia and those clauses. And so I think it's good, it would be good for us to know at some point if we know any more about that answer.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take note. An employee of a large employer may decline a shift that begins less than 10 hours after the end of a previous work shift. The employee shall, oh, if the employee consents to work such a shift, the employee shall be entitled to an unfair scheduling payment equal to one-half of the employee's regular rate of pay for each hour the employee works. So in this case, an employee makes $22 an hour. Is, um, works a shift less than six hours after their prior shift ended. They'd receive a payment equal to one-half their regular rate of pay for each hour. So that would, in this example, be $11 times four hours if it's a four-hour shift, equals $44, a payment of $44. Part, or this section was entitled in the petition, "Part-time employees shall have fair access to additional hours." So before, before hiring additional employees or subcontractors, including the hiring through the use of temporary services or staffing agencies, large and medium employers must, one, offer additional hours of work to existing employees who in the employer's good faith and reasonable judgment have the skills and experience to perform the work.
Councilmember Cooper.
Sorry, I have to take us back one slide. Is there a definition of shift in this?
Uh, I don't believe shift is identified in the initiative language.
So if you work one hour or four hours and come back and work four hours in the evening, that, that example would probably apply if they don't define shift? Or is there a legal definition of shift? Maybe I can't ask that question right now, but-
I think, I think we'll make a note that there's a question about a legal definition of what constitutes a shift.
Perfect. Thank you.
Assistant City Manager Debbie Sullivan.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that we, we received the petition language on June, June 24th and it is quite long and it, it's a lot to unpack and to understand what the implications are. So please feel free to ask your questions. I'm taking note. And, you know, if we just do it as here are the questions that I have, I'm taking notes of them and we will, um, seek to get answers to those. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Vanderpoel.
Not a question, but, uh, maybe a recommendation for next week thought. So, um, I think a, a way for clarity is if, in the slide deck, if we're able to have an example of what, it can be made up comp business, but an example of a small, a medium and large and what they have to do and what they don't have to do based on the size. And, and it could just be an example made up business, but just so that it's very clear and understanding where the differences are between the, the scalability, I think will help with a lot of clarity in the public.
Okay. A reorganizing of the content as it applies to each size of business?
Yeah, just as an example, because I think that, uh, this can get lost in the sauce really easily for people.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Madron.
Now, as we're talking about, um, rate of pay for each hour, does that imply that salaried, um, employees are not included in this and it's only those who are paid at an hourly rate?
Uh, we'll take, we'll take a note of that question.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Back to you, Stacy.
Okay. Okay. Um, this section shall not, oh, excuse me. There we go. This section shall not be construed to require any employer to offer an employee work hours if the employer would be required to compensate the employee at a time and a half an unfair scheduling payment or other penalty under this chapter or other premium rate under a law or collective bargaining agreement. And, and this, this section also includes a specific effective date of, um, 90 days or excuse me, implementation or, an effect date 90 days after the effective date. The next session or section, excuse me, addresses wages. So as stated in the petition, "Large employers shall pay minimum wages comparable to other Puget Sound cities." "Upon the effective date, the minimum wage for every employee in the city of Olympia is increased from that set by the state minimum wage to the higher city of Olympia minimum wage established in this ordinance." "Upon the effective date, every large employer must pay to each employee an hourly wage at least $20 per hour." "The minimum wage established under point 040B shall stay in effect until the end of the calendar year in which it becomes effective on January 1 of the next calendar year. And each January and thereafter, the hourly minimum wage must increase by the annual rate of inflation." The next section refers to-
One moment, Stacy. Uh, Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Had a delayed thought on the last slide. Uh, and this goes back to a question I answered earlier. I think it might be one for, for later or for next week. But, uh, the phrasing, uh, every employee in the city of Olympia, I would love if there's any precedent to clarify that language of, is that? Yeah, just some clarity. And I think maybe the, the BNO definition that Councilmember Cooper used would be helpful, but I would just love any help understanding that better.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Gilman.
I've been trying to hold back from any kind of backseat driving, but I, I would suggest that anybody using QuickBooks or any kind of system like that, it, it's, it's already sort of automated that many, many organizations are paying people in tons of different jurisdictions and they just push a button. So, so I, 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 I think it's, um, it's, it's, it's pretty doable by personnel offices, the, the question of who's working in Olympia and who's working in Tacoma or Lacey, so.
So to, to clarify though, that then the interpretation is anyone who's working any hours in Olympia? Is how I should interpret all of this?
Exactly. That's, I, I think that's, that's, that's been my understanding is, yeah, is a work site.
Councilmember Vanderpoel.
Uh, I'm moving away from questions and into recommendations because I know sometimes I won't be able to get an answer for some of these. But, uh, uh, I would be really interested in seeing a breakdown of the age groups of folks that are on the minimum wage in the city so that we have an understanding of that, uh, for next week, if that's possible. Not possible?
That, that won't be possible. In fact, that was part of the scope of work that we directed you to do with the economic impact analysis, yeah, work.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next, the next section refers to medium and small employers having a multi-year phase-in period. So starting upon the effective date and through the end of that calendar year, medium employers must pay their employees an hourly minimum wage rate as established in section point or 040 minus $2 per hour. The $2 reduction must decrease annually by $1 on January 1 of each year thereafter. Starting upon the effective date and through the end of that calendar year, small employers must pay their employees an hourly minimum wage rate as established in section point 040 minus $3. The $3 reduction must decrease annually by 50 cents on January 1 of each year thereafter until zero. Employer, this is, this section has, has to do with coverage and employer classifications. Employer classification for a calendar year will be calculated based upon the average number of employees during all weeks in the previous calendar year in which the employer had at least one employee. Uh, it, it, I'll also note here within this paragraph that in this determination, all employees will be counted regardless of their location and including employees who worked in full-time employment, part-time employment, joint employment, temporary employment or through the services of a temporary services or staffing agency. For the purposes of employer classification, and I think Councilmember Madron, this may be related to your earlier question, separate entities will be considered a single employer if they form an integrated enterprise or are under joint control by one of those entities or a separate entity.
Stacy, would you be willing to, do you have in front of you the, the, the little list of criteria that defines that since we had a question earlier?
The factors, so I'll, I'll start over again for clarity. For the purposes of employer classification, separate entities will be considered a single employer if they form an integrated enterprise or are under joint control by one of those entities or a separate entity. The factors to consider in making this assessment include, but are not limited to, degree of interrelation between the operations of multiple entities. Number two, degree to which entities share common management. Number three, centralized control of labor relations. And number four, degree of common ownership or financial control over the entities. This section addresses, as noted, you know, as the language notes in it, protecting workers through safety planning and precautions. Every large employer must create a workplace safety plan. Every large employer must consult with workers in developing the workplace safety plan. It must comply with the following minimum safety standards. Large employers must protect workers in isolated or dangerous areas, providing them access to panic buttons. Large employers must establish and document at least an annual training or drill of an evacuation plan. And large employers must protect employees from injury by establishing and maintaining a safe staffing level for workplaces containing over 15,000 square feet of retail space.
Councilmember Madron.
I'm curious, you know, on the previous slide, there was language, you know, including but not limited to. And then I hear her, see here, like maintaining a safe staffing level. Like who is making the determinations at the end of the day as to whether or not an employer is meeting the intent of this initiative?
We will speak to some of the language that relates to enforcement, but that's the extent of what we could-
Okay.
Share this.
Stacy, and I'm, I'm assuming as I look at the, these, um, minimum safety standards and I look at large employers must, um, I'm assuming that this language was created because there is no legislation at the state level that already requires this.
The initiative language doesn't, doesn't refer to that, so that we'll, we'll make note of that question. There is, uh, there is language in here that refers to the relationship to bargaining agreements.
Okay. It, it would be helpful to have some context of, I, I can't imagine that there are no minimum safety standard requirements at the state level. That would be strange. So it, it, it would be great to know what already exists. What are the requirements for large employers who employ so many people? There have to be some standards.
We'll take that note.
Mayor Protemwin.
Yeah, um, I, along with the rest of us, I'm sure have been talking to people in the community, both for and against and just questioning. So I have kind of a worker's bill of rights, I think FAQ in front of me, but when it comes to, uh, uh, the safe work environment bit of it, I see in parentheses as large retail and, um, and then also I think we've all been hearing about the trends in retail theft. And so I think that, uh, this is really kind of getting at that, if that helps anyone.
You can continue. Thank you.
So, and again, just a reminder that this, this presentation is not inclusive of all the language in these are selected portions. So, um, this section addresses retaliation, so retaliation prohibited. So no employer or any other person shall interfere with, restrain or deny the exercise of or the attempt to exercise any right protected by this chapter. No employer or any other person shall take any adverse action against any person because the person has exercised in good faith the rights under this chapter. For the purpose of this section, an adverse action means any action taken by a person that would dissuade a reasonable person from exercising any right protected under this chapter. This section addresses enforcement. If the employer is found to have committed violations of this chapter, the city or court of competent jurisdiction on behalf of the city shall assess a fine in the amount set forth below adjusted for inflation from the effective date.
Councilmember Madron.
So enforced by the city and a fine payable to the city?
So there's some additional language around enforcement that may address some of your question, but we'll make a note of it.
Yeah, but the fine would ultimately be paid to the city?
I, it, yeah, we can't answer that question at this time.
Okay.
So the, so in, continuing on in terms of enforcement, each employer must retain records as required by RCW 49.46.070 as well as such information as the city may require to confirm compliance with this chapter.
Councilmember Gilman.
Stacy, I just, um, we, we did, the, the first part you did was the section C about the table of fines. And I just, I, I, I had highlighted that, because it was, it was a question with a, a group of business owners I met, that the sections A and B are- a group of business owners I met, that the sections A and B are are two options, that either the city is is authorized to implement and enforce the chapter, or that any person or class of persons in section B might bring a civil action in in a court. So, they they left, that was just one of the things that employers were saying, well, is it going to be one or the other? And at this point, I don't see it defined in, that's part of our decision that we'll make down the road.
Yeah, well, we will make note of that. For purposes of our, of anyone potentially viewing, I can go back and verbally speak to section B that you're referring to, Councilmember Gilman. And so, enforcement, section B, any person or class of persons that suffers financial injury as a result of a violation of this chapter, or is a subject of prohibited retaliation under this chapter, or any other individual or entity acting on their behalf, may bring a civil action in a court of competent jurisdiction against the employer or other person violating this chapter, and upon prevailing, shall be awarded reasonable attorney fees and costs and and such legal or equitable relief as may be appropriate to remedy the violation, including, without limitation, the payment of any unpaid wages plus interest due to the person and liquidated damages in an additional amount of up to twice the unpaid wages, compensatory damages, and a penalty payable to any aggrieved party of between one thousand and five thousand dollars if the aggrieved party was subject to prohibited retaliation.
Councilmember Cooper.
Just kind of on Councilwoman Gilman's question, like section A. So, the section A says the city is authorized to implement and enforce this chapter, so it does not say required. So, I'm just speaking the obvious, but I don't think that's a question.
So, section A in its entirety reads, the city is authorized to implement and enforce this chapter, including promulgating regulations. Any regulations the city promulgates shall have the force and effect of law and may be relied on to determine rights and responsibilities under this chapter.
Can anyone define that word off the tip of their tongue? Promulgate? To create. Okay, thank you. So, that means the city, it implies that the city could also create more.
I think we'll take a note of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there not another place where it there, it gives a certain amount of time to for enforcement and implementation of enforcement? Because if it's if it's optional for the city and we're authorized, but is there not another place that?
There there is mention of a statute of limitations of three years. Is that what you're, or are you saying?
Let me see if I can cite my source, and I will get back to you. But I'm, I'm, my wires are getting crossed based on that that language of authorized but not necessarily required. So, something's confusing me there. Yeah. Councilmember Gilman.
Mayor Payne, you you might be referring to other legal requirements, rulemaking, which is right above your signature line, that describes within a hundred and twenty days after the effective date, the city must adopt rule, et cetera. That's, yeah.
That's exactly what I'm referring to, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So, is that not, is that too diff, I guess I'm just confused. Is that language then contradicting itself? Because then it's saying we are required if we have a certain amount of time?
It's, it, really, it's just specifying that's the amount of time we have to move through the rulemaking process as a city.
Okay.
I'm just gonna go. Are you gonna talk about the effective date question later, or would this be a place to add on to that? Because I did have one question on that, and I can't remember if it was in your slides.
You you can ask your your question now.
Okay. And I think it's a parking lot question for for next week. In the section, so section three at the end on rulemaking says a hundred and twenty days after the effective date. Section six identifies what that effective date is. My question is what happens in that a hundred and twenty days? So, if it becomes effective January one, what happens until the rulemaking is in place? And and what are people's options if they feel that during that period that, you know, there was a violation? I'm just curious.
There's, there are some, there's some language in here that specifies a different effective date, but we would need to go back through again to highlight those specifically.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. You can continue, Stacy.
I believe I noted the first one here, but each employer must retain records, as well as such information as the city may require to confirm compliance with this chapter. And employers must permit authorized city representatives access to work sites and relevant records for the purpose of monitoring compliance with the chapter and investigating complaints of noncompliance. The city may designate representatives, including city contractors and representatives, unions, or worker advocacy organizations to access the work site and relevant records. Continuing with enforcement, complaints that any provision of this chapter has been violated may also be presented to the city attorney, who is hereby authorized to investigate and, if they deem appropriate, initiate legal or other action to remedy any violation of this chapter. The city has the authority to issue administrative citations, this may have gotten at an earlier question, and to order injunctive relief, including reinstatement, restitution, payment of back wages, or other forms of relief. The city may, in its exercise of its authority and performance of its functions and services, agree to participate jointly or in cooperation with Washington State, or any county, city, town, or other incorporated place or subdivision thereof, or engage outside counsel to enforce this chapter. The remedies and penalties provided under this chapter are cumulative and are not intended to be exclusive and of any other available remedies or penalties, including existing remedies for enforcement of Olympia Municipal Code chapters. And as I mentioned a few moments ago, mayor, the statute of limitations for any enforcement action shall be three years. This section was entitled Other Legal Requirements. And again, as a reminder, this is not, the PowerPoint slides do not include all of the language in the initiative. Section E, except as to the minimum wage, the requirements of this chapter shall not apply to any employees covered by a bona fide collective bargaining agreement, to the extent that such requirements are expressly waived in the collective bargaining agreement, or in an addendum to an existing agreement, including an agreement that's open for negotiation in clear and unambiguous terms, and the employees have ratified an alternative structure to meet the public policy goals of this chapter. These are the last sections cited here within the PowerPoint presentation, section three around rulemaking. This was noted earlier, but within a hundred and twenty days after the effective date, the city must adopt rules and procedures to implement and ensure compliance with this chapter. The city must seek feedback from worker organizations and employers before finalizing the rules and procedures. And section six, effective date. If this ordinance is enacted during a November general election, it shall take effect on January one of the immediately following year. So, that concludes the language that I had taken directly from the initiative and put it into the PowerPoint slides. Again, the rest of the content is available in a complete document, which was attached to your staff report. I'll conclude the presentation portion by just reiterating our timeline and next steps from here. So, to to wrap up for tonight, we're here July seventeenth at a city council study session, and our purpose was to have a better understanding of the process and also what the language that's included in the initiative as submitted to the city. And in order to adhere to the timeline of requiring to act within twenty days, we have you slated to take action on July twenty-second on a resolution. On July twenty-second, you'll have two resolutions in front of you, so you'll take action on one. One resolution will be to pass the proposed initiative petition ordinance without alteration. The other resolution will be to send the proposed initiative petition ordinance without alteration to a vote of the people. So, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Stacy. Are there any additional questions from the council? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Stacy, how much does the, do we know how much the election costs yet?
We did, we did get an estimate from the county on what the total cost for the election would be, and it's approximately sixty-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
Okay. And then, at at fifteen hundred dollars to finish the fourteen, the remaining signatures, you assume about a dollar a signature was spent already on the signature validation process?
Yeah, I suppose.
So, okay, great. And then, how much is budgeted for the wage and Bill of Rights research?
Oh, so, well, we had a set aside for funds that were not used for Southeast Annexation Study last year, and what we had set aside for that was a hundred and fifty thousand. That does not necessarily mean we need to utilize all of those funds for the, you know, the the scope of work, but that's, that's the funding that we had identified.
Okay. You answered my question about how much we pay to validate. So, I I have sort of two requests for other decisions. So, one, and I don't know if they're Tuesday night or we could give a little feedback tonight. One is to consider actually going ahead and head and validating the rest of the signatures, so the pile is complete, we have a clear picture. I'd like to request that. And then, I'm also interested in a discussion about whether we go forward with the research and, but I, but I think we might want to have a legal discussion about what it might mean to be doing that research while there's an election happening with city resources. So, I'll just put those in the parking lot. I don't, I don't necessarily need an answer right now unless you think they're viable for tonight. And then, and then I have one other question.
No. So, at the top, we mentioned that we wouldn't be given direction to staff tonight from, you know, from the study session, so we're gonna hold that. But proceed with your your other question.
So, then can we put those maybe just in your notes so that we can talk about them after we take our action? Because I think they're separate from the action.
Sure.
From this decision, but maybe part of the same agenda.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. And so, my question is the same as Robert's. How many people make minimum wage in Olympia? And you answered that we don't know yet, because we haven't done our our research. Is that right?
Yeah, I haven't had sufficient time yet to look at anything that we might have existing, and that would be something that we would include in a scope of work for a consultant.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I, so I, I want to just give a couple of comments to go with that question, because I poked around today a little bit to see what I could find. So, the Washington change in minimum wage since 2020 is nineteen percent increase over the last six years, going from thirteen fifty to sixteen sixty-six. These are all facts. There's no opinion, just so I don't get cut off. Thurston EDC reported this fall that according to jobs Q, in an unknown year, that the total workforce in Olympia is twenty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty workers, with four point nine percent or thirteen one hundred and seventy within one dollar of minimum wage. And forty-four percent of workers, or twelve thousand five hundred and sixteen, are within five dollars of minimum wage. And just for context, the current minimum wage plus five dollars is twenty-one sixty-six. One FTE is two thousand and eighty hours a year. The current minimum wage is thirty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars a year, and minimum wage plus five dollars of twenty-one sixty-six is forty-five thousand and fifty-two dollars a year. In Olympia, the median household income in 2023 was seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, and the federal property rate was fourteen point eight percent. For men, the median income, median earnings were approximately fifty-seven thousand six hundred and eighteen, and for women, the median was forty-six thousand five hundred and eight. When you account for the actual cost of living in Olympia, using the Alice data, which people know is my day job, so I'll just put that caveat out there, the real poverty numbers of households who can't afford their basic bills was forty-four percent, or eleven thousand one hundred and eighty-four households. In Thurston County, the household survival budget for a family of four with two working adults and two kids in childcare was a hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, just to meet basic needs. If a family of four is made up of a working adult, an elder sixty-five and older, and two kids in childcare, the survival budget becomes a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Those two numbers, a hundred and fifteen thousand, is fifty-five dollars an hour. So, I just want to make sure that no one's talking about this, doing anything around the poverty line, because we're talking about a lot more money to talk about poverty. And then, it was recently reported that the U.S. dollar lost twenty-five percent of its value since January of 2020. This means the minimum wage workers of the last period, over that period, lost six percent of their pay value over that time due to inflation, because of the nineteen percent increase, and then a twenty-five percent loss in the value of their dollar. So, I just wanted to get some facts that are mostly easy to find through a Google search and and put them on the record for the community. Also, our Thurston, our Olympia Strong work talks a fair bit at the beginning about the workforce. And so, I just wanted to to say that we do have, we do have resources available, and I wanted to get this out now because, largely because of my question about how, how, how we might be even allowed to talk about facts while there's an election, other than our fact sheet that we're, that I don't know if we're allowed to do or not. That's another question for our lawyer that I need to know is if this has the same fact sheet that would be allowed from a thing that we would put on the ballot. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman.
Stacy, I'm, you, we've referred several times to that scope of work and the requests for qualifications or proposals, whatever. It sounds like it hasn't, we haven't received proposals or at this point. I'm just, what, really, my question is, would it be possible to pivot that resource if our questions changed at at this point and we're more thinking about implementation?
I, I believe the answer is yes. I mean, we we went out for a request for qualifications and not a request for proposals. So, we did that to seek firms that were qualified to do this type of work, and so we still have an opportunity to refine the scope. We also did a Q and A addendum midway through the process to note that we had received the initiative petition. And so, we, it actually, the RFQ, the initial period closes tomorrow, I believe, so, but we have an opportunity to to create a scope that can fit our needs.
Thank you. I I find that really helpful, and after we make a decision, we can maybe have another conversation about whether the the scope we initially proposed is still the best fit.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Vanderpool.
I just want to agree that we need, I would like to look at the scope again, just kind of look into it, because, you know, I, I was, as I was writing down questions, I was thinking of the questions I've heard from the public, and some of these, we just don't have the data on, right, right now. So, like, for example, thinking about having a clear understanding of disposable income in the city, right? So, how many people have that are rent burdened, or they have, or they can't afford, or which, rent burden plus childcare, and how much of their income, where they're at, if they're at minimum wage, how many people in the population are stuck, right, in that kind of like, they don't have very much reserve in in there? And I, I think of this because I, I get, I'm curious about how many people in our community can't, can barely afford to live in the community, but then have, have a hard time investing in the local economy because their income is so low, or their rent is so. so high. And so I, I'm always thinking about that subsect. I don't know how we can present that in the data, but I'm very, that's the, the subsect I'm the most curious about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right. Councilmember Cooper.
I, I'm just trying to think if, if we could, like, give a nod about counting the 1,500 signatures now.
So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We cannot take action in the study session, that's why I said that, yes.
Just to reiterate too, is that the county had told us along with that estimate that they'd be balancing this work with, with starting to count ballots, so they were, they were going to be squeezing it in amongst the next several weeks anyway. Yeah.
Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Yeah, I just have a question to add to the list, and hopefully we can get it answered before we have to take action. I know that some years back, there was some discussion on the city council about raising minimum wage. And so I'm curious, there must have been some work done, and maybe it's a little outdated, I'm not sure. But there, yeah, I'd like to see some data on what it looks like to raise minimum wage and what does it do to the, to the cost of living around us. And so I think that some of the concerns that, that I have, that other people have had, is that, and perhaps it's thinking a little too simplistically, but say at a restaurant, for example, if the wages increases, will the menu prices increase, and then less people come in to enjoy that restaurant anyway? So I'm, I'm just curious about that. Any data that we have about, you know, what happens to a community when the minimum wage increases?
Just a clarifying question, Mayor Protem, do you mean having that information by Tuesday's evening's meeting?
I just mean if, if we, there must have been some work done on this, and so I just wonder if we could dig for that. Not necessarily. I know there won't be time and capacity for us to get answers to all of the questions that we asked, but I know that there was some, some working on this, not exactly this, but this type of issue in the past. I just wonder, do we have anything to glean from?
We'll look to see what, or if maybe one of our, maybe one of the local other partner agencies may have done some, we'll do our best to see what we can find.
That's all I can ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, we didn't really get to the point in 2015 where the city got into research, because we never had an active proposal other than the one that Labor and I wrote and proposed. And so we were, because, because of the state, initiative came online for 15 before we got far enough. So when I have looked for that research, the University of Washington maintains a pretty healthy body of evidence, and you can find links to most of that on the Seattle minimum wage website, because they actually have paid for the state, the, the university to study their minimum wage changes since the beginning and compare them to other cities who have had minimum wage changes. There are about three sentences to answer your question in the briefing that the EDC wrote in December also.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
I, I really don't mean to put you on the spot, I'll look into that, but do you have those three sentences?
Computer, but I can send you all a link to that brief tonight or tomorrow, because I, because I used some of it in here.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, any additional questions? Councilmember Vanderpoel.
Not a question, just a reminder to the public that's watching, and I know Mayor has mentioned this before, the public comment period, it's a tricky situation, because it, once it becomes a ballot initiative, just for people out there, please come on next week and comment, because after that, once it be, if it becomes a ballot initiative, it's harder to public comment on it.
Yes, not just harder, they will not be able to comment on it in public comment in the event that it does become a ballot initiative. So the reason that you can speak on it on Tuesday, the 22nd, is because it is a proposed initiative, and that hasn't been officially approved yet, so, yes. Any additional questions? I'll just say that a lot of the questions that we asked tonight are exactly the reason we gave that direction last year, so that we could dig in and learn a bit, a little bit more about the, the economic conditions of the city. And so I do agree with going back and revisiting the scope after tonight and making sure that the questions we asked, based on inspiration from the initiative, are aligned with information that we can find out within the scope of work that we've directed you to do, Stacy. And that's regardless of what happens with the initiative. I think it's important for us to know, you know, what, what are the answers to those questions we asked tonight? Okay, so are there any more questions before we move on? Okay. All right, so just a reminder to the community that we will be, you see the options for city council action, and we will be taking that action on Tuesday, July 22nd, here in the city council chambers at 6:00 PM. So at this time, we are going to recess for five minutes, and we'll reconvene in Room 423 for an executive session pursuant to litigation and potential litigation. No decisions will be made, and we will meet in Room 423, and after that 90 minutes, we'll be adjourned for tonight.